Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Attleboro School Committee, Monday, June 27th. Notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. I'd like to start first by bringing forward James Storrs. James Storrs is a, you can come on forward and take a seat if you would, James.
Sure.
James is an Eagle Scout, and recently as part of his Eagle Scout project, he completed a beautification project here at the high school. So we wanted to reward him and acknowledge him for that, and I was hoping, James, that you would just tell us a little bit about what it is that you did.
Absolutely. So, well, as we all know, Attleboro High School is all about blue pride. And personally, you know, I want to make sure that not only the students and the teachers, but just anyone that has anything to do with the school has blue pride, you know, has that blue pride. And that doesn't mean, I mean, that means not only do you want to have pride in, you know, your peers, your teachers, but also in your environment. And, you know, going around the school, there's a lot of areas that, you know, could be better. And I actually reached out to the principal, Mr. Rooney, and when I was trying to find ideas for my Eagle project, and he actually recommended that I do the courtyard. I believe it's actually behind that curtain over there, that exact courtyard. And I'll be completely honest with you, I took a look at the courtyard and I basically said, I was like, you know, a lot of work could be done. And, you know, last weekend, I got all of my, you know, troop members together, some adult volunteers. My family is very supportive, they helped me out as well. And we were successfully able to complete that Eagle Scout project. And I'll be personally honest with you guys, I think it looks phenomenal. I'm very happy with the result.
Thank you, James. I think, you know, it's a testament to what we're trying to do. And to you as an Eagle Scout, you know, to come in from, I know you're a student of the Attleboro Schools, but to come in and benefit them in one of your other capacities is something that we love to see. Anyone have anything they'd like to say or any questions to ask? How long did the, Mr. Rooney, yeah, please.
If I may, I just would like to express my appreciation to James and all the members of his family and the members of his troop, because as he said, that courtyard is right on the other side of that curtain. It is one that is the most visible to visitors of the Francisco Conference Room, the one that is the most visible to visitors in the principal's lobby. And our, most of our students see it on a regular basis, as well as people who've come to away basketball games, staff members from around the district that come to the Distance Learning Center. And so it was something that was sorely in need of an upgrade. And we now have a beautiful new planter box, we have new shrubbery mulch, renovated benches. It's certainly, it's certainly a treasure now as opposed to an eyesore that it used to be. So we're very appreciative.
Thank you. Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James, I did have the opportunity to stop by today, you did a great job.
Thank you very much.
There is a reason why we used to keep that curtain closed. We can now, we can actually open it and enjoy all the work you did, but thank you very much. It's really, it's a great job.
Absolutely. It was a pleasure.
We're proud of you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We have a certificate of commendation for you for what you've done, and I think it'd be a good, we could ask Mr. Storrs here too, if you could read that.
Read that to you and hand it out.
Sorry.
Certificate of commendation. The Attleboro School Committee hereby recognizes James Storrs, Ryan Storrs, for the completion of his Eagle Scout beautification project. The fact that this project includes an area of the high school grounds for the students and the community to enjoy reflects both dedication and thoughtfulness. The School Committee extends its sincere gratitude. Signed Stephen K. Withers Jr., Chairman, School Committee approved, June 27, 2016.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
James, thank you very much, and there are a lot of other places in the high school, so tell your friends.
I'll be sure to.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Rooney and his students he has with him today.
Thank you again for having us tonight. We're joined by Ally DeRose and Harry Lancaster. They are the, they are the new SAC members, and they're looking forward to joining the School Committee for subsequent meetings. A little thumbnail sketch on Ally. Ally recently attended Girl State at Stone Hill. She's very active in Best Buddies. She is a member of the Student Council, the National Honor Society, the Spanish National Honor Society. She is also the chairperson of the Southeastern Regional Student Advisory Council. She also plays lacrosse, and in her spare time, she scoops a mean ice cream cone at Bliss Dairy. So, Harry is also on Student Council. He is a member, he has been a past member of the Attleboro High School SAC. He volunteers as a tutor for other students in our district. He is a stalwart in soccer, he's been on varsity soccer for four years. He also participates in spring track. In his former spare time, he would flip burgers at Wendy's, and now I believe he works for a septic company. So I won't try to come up with some sort of pun. But we're very excited. They are wonderful representatives of our upcoming senior class.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, and thank you both for taking on this responsibility. We look forward to having you at our meetings over the coming year. I hope you'll find it interesting, sometimes more so than others, I'm sure, but, you know, it is an important role that you'll serve, so I thank you again. I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to say to the committee?
Um, Harry and I are both looking forward to working with the administration. We're looking forward to putting forward the initiatives, not only that you guys have for us, but that we have for you too. So we're just open to any ideas.
Yeah, and I'm really excited to not only represent the kids that are in the high school, but all the kids that are in the school district. We're really gonna try to get the student voice to be heard.
Great.
It's important to us.
Any questions? Mr. Quinn?
First of all, welcome. And second of all, I think you, the role that you're about to play is extremely vital for our strategic plan. When Mr. Sawyer and I were in a meeting about an upcoming community engagement, potential grant, there was a, one representative from the grant organization said that there's no decision about us without us. And every decision that we make ultimately comes down to impacting the students. So it's gonna be, you play a crucial role in not only representing yourselves and representing the high school, but also representing the rest of the student body. And what my hope here for you is, is that when you write about this in your college essay or you list this as a resume, you can talk about specifics that you, actions that you've taken, and how that you've helped to bring about change within the school community, rather than it just being another item on your, on your really long and really impressive resume. And I think if we're successful in utilizing you, you'll have a lot to say. So welcome, and we look forward to having you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Yes, welcome both, and I do echo the sentiments of Mr. Quinn. And I would just have to say to Harry, if I call you Max by accident, please just use me now because, wow, I'm canon. You're looking dudes, huh? We definitely want to hear from you guys, you know. It is about you guys, so any subject matter we touch upon, we'd like to hear your opinion of it. And that's how we come to trying to make the best decision we can. So again, welcome to both of you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you. We look forward to seeing you at the meetings. Enjoy your summer, and we'll be seeing a lot of you over the coming year.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have approval of minutes. The minutes from the June 13, 2016 meeting were provided to you in your packet. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any discussion?
I just pointed out earlier that there's just one tiny little minor error, edit, that you used to do. The A instead of at.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have the consent agenda? Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Larson Tools and Shipping Company? Larson Tools and Stamping Company? To the Attleboro High School Best Buddies account. Discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $100 from an anonymous donor to the high school credit recovery program to cover a student's tuition. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $10,000 from the Studly PTO to the Studly Gifts Donation Line to be used for educational needs slash building improvements. Discussion? I'll just say that I was present when the PTO presented the funds, as was Ms. Regan, to the, to the school last, last week or the week before. It's tough to tell now, but it's impressive what that PTO and the other PTOs do for our schools. So thank you to them and all our PTOs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation of five Chromebooks with an estimated value of $180 per device from Mark and Louis Cooper on behalf of their son Cameron for classroom use to the Studly Elementary School. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $500. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $500 broken down according to Ms. Regan, as she's gonna explain it to us right now?
The middle schools participated in a research product, project called UDO Food Cast. And for our participation in that research, they have given us $500 to be split between the three middle schools.
So the 500 will be split evenly between the three?
Correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that concludes our consent agenda. Moving on to our business agenda for the week or for the meeting. First item is our K through 12 STEM Coordinator introduction, and for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Before we can introduce, I first should announce that on the July Personnel Report, you'll see that we have very significant retirement. Linda Ferrera has worked for the Attleboro Public Schools for 16 years. For as long as, you know, I've been involved in such things, she's been in her position as the K-8 Math Coordinator. And in many ways, her work over the last couple of years has blazed a trail for our change towards K-12 STEM. Her work with the high school to bring the eighth grade algebra class to the high school. Her work with science teachers on PD in the district. And her participation in the district STEM initiatives with the city's STEM Committee. All are ways that she's helped us to see that, you know, it makes a lot of sense for us in this moment to move from the K-8 Coordinator position to the K-12 STEM Coordinator that we have posted for and are ready to announce tonight who we'll be appointing. So before we talk about her replacement, I thought it was important to just thank Ms. Ferrera for all her work to the district. All right, so at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Regan, who would like to introduce our new coordinator.
So our new K-12 STEM Coordinator is Tammy LaFleur. Tammy has been with us for the past 23 years. She was a grade 5, 6 math science teacher, and for the past 12 years, she has been a math coach at Coelho Middle School. In her role as coach, she's been supporting teachers in the transition to the new, or the 2011 mathematics standards. She's been helping them to analyze data, and she's been instrumental in providing professional development in math and supporting science at the same time, especially in the past couple of years. This past year, she has been instrumental in helping Linda with our partnership with Sensata Technologies, as well as the Southeastern Massachusetts STEM Network. Before she came to Attleboro, she was a teacher in Florida and taught science. And also spends her free time taking courses in science, life science, as well as physics for kids. So I think she's a great addition to our team in the curriculum office. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. It's such an honor to be here and to accept this position. I've had the best mentor with Linda Ferrera. She is unbelievable. Thank you, Linda, for everything. I have a Bat phone that I will call her anytime. She's even here tonight, up from the Cape, just to be here tonight. So I just have had a great mentorship with Linda. So I look forward to the challenge of this job changing to science, technology, engineering, and math. I think that they link together naturally, and kids are innately passionate about science and how things work. And I think it's just gonna be a lot of fun getting kids engaged, inspired, and creating things and questioning. So I'm excited about that. I also look forward to increasing the number of partnerships that will be involved with Attleboro Schools. I'm excited about that too, and I think the more stakeholders, the better. So I'm excited about that. So thank you for this opportunity, and I'm very excited. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and we look forward to, you know, to you taking on this new role, a new position in the Attleboro Public Schools, which is exciting in and of itself. I would like to hear what, you know, what you think about the role specifically, how it's different than what there's been in the past, and, you know, what your vision is.
So, we haven't had a science coordinator for a while.
Right.
And so I know that there has been some frustration with that. So I think that teachers have been really supportive in the last couple of weeks, knowing that somebody's going to be promoting and helping, just, they've been doing the science, but now just to have Attleboro backing that movement. I think that I'll take a lot of the ways that we introduced the standards and developed them. It was not overnight. It was a process. It was a few years in the making, and we really built up a strong math program with Linda. And I think that we can do the same thing, combining math with the science and the engineering, and just work backwards and start with the standards and make sure everybody first gets a grasp of what they entail and the practices. Just the modeling and questioning and persevering, all those things that we do in math too, those practices are very similar in science. So it's exciting.
Mr. Quinn?
What I also think is helpful is that you've taught science before.
Yeah.
You know, coming from Teacher Prep Program, I know that a lot of folks come in, you know, to elementary, especially with, you know, ELA, Psychology, Communication. Not often a lot of, you know, science background. So having that and being able to see the integration is just gonna be so crucial. You know, one of the benefits of elementary is you've got that flexible time, so anytime you can, you know, have those overlaps, it's really beneficial to the students. I appreciate, you know, you invoking the strategic plan. You know, your role is gonna be crucial in making sure that that, the relevance piece comes into play.
Yes.
And, you know, just welcome. Thank you for your initial contributions to the district, and, you know, we're looking forward to seeing what's next.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing much more of you at these meetings and around the district. Thank you.
Me too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, the second item on our agenda is one that we haven't talked about in a while, but is one that we did spend quite some time on in the past, and that's in agreement with Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical School. As I'm sure none of you will forget, as a result of the changes under Mass General Laws, or, excuse me, the regulations, we no longer, we couldn't just send our students to Tri-County for exploratory programs. As a result of a lot of work by the administration and deliberation by this body, you authorized me to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Tri-County to send our students there under various conditions. We have an agreement that's been negotiated with Tri-County, and that Tri-County has actually approved. What this provides is that students are eligible for acceptance for vocational programs that Attleboro does not offer on a space-available basis. So again, that's the programs that we don't offer here at the high school. And importantly, they're only eligible to attend for participation in exploratory program for the single program identified on the student's application. So the process that happens sometimes in the past where a student might apply for a specific program we don't offer, such as dental assisting or medical assisting, and they don't get into that program, but they, you know, get into cosmetics or something along those lines. That stop has been put to that, at least. And the rest of the provisions, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. It really just encompasses what the, how it worked before. The only difference is the amount that we'll be paying per student. And number seven, which is $13,171, is actually the amount that the Commonwealth pays, reimburses the school district per student. So we won't be losing any money on this. I mean, it is less than we were paying before under the old, the old program. So, you know, we did make out a little bit better in that regard. But otherwise, I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. So I would entertain a motion to authorize me to execute this agreement on behalf of the School Committee. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on, Policy EEA Transportation. The Policy Subcommittee met, which means required to this, this meeting, to deliberate over changes to Policy EEA, which is the policy transportation policy that we amended some time ago to provide transportation only on a fee-for-service basis for students in seventh grade and above. What this, these changes purport to do is to provide safety exceptions for walkers in grades two through six, and then safety exceptions for those who are otherwise ineligible for transportation in grades seven and above. In adopting the policy before, we inadvertently failed to provide the safety exceptions that we had previously provided under the old policy. So the first thing that we'd be looking to do is to, would be to suspend, suspend the rules regarding tabling of policies, so that we can, so that we can act as policy immediately and send out the necessary transportation notices.
So moved?
Mr. Gaddius?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Scales? Mr. Withers, yes? Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
You have a proposed amendment in your packet. As you'll see, when I find it, there was one change to the, well, there was a new paragraph added, second to the bottom, which again provides exceptions for safety purposes for Walker designations two through six. And transportation eligibility, seven through 12, may be made in consultation with the Transportation Office and the Admiral Police Department. Changes to list of addresses on the safety exemption list kept by the Transportation Office must be approved by the School Committee. Walker exceptions are entitled to free transportation, and eligibility exceptions are entitled to fee-for-service transportation. So again, what that means is Walker exceptions, those being grades two through six, are entitled to free transportation. And eligibility exceptions, those in grades seven through 12, are entitled to eligibility exceptions, so they can pay to ride the bus on a fee-for-service basis. We have a motion to approve the amendment to the policy.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Educational Assessment Resolution. Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, thank you. So, this, I'm trying to think of how far back this goes, but certainly this, I'll say this year, we became involved with the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment. And tonight, I am asking for two actions. The first is to pass the resolution, which would, by way, you know, endorse the consortium for the Attleboro Public Schools. And then also to approve the grant that is associated with the consortium. For me to, you know, ask you to be able to do that, I think I need to try to explain what the consortium is and what their work is about, so that you can appreciate why we are excited about our participation in this initiative and the work that's due to come with it. The, I mean, there are materials that we included in the packet, but by way of summary, I think that there is reason to yearn for a better accountability system than the one that we have. And, you know, I want to be very clear that it is the opinion of the administration that, you know, Massachusetts has benefited from its accountability system. You know, our role as a leader, both nationally and internationally in education, I think is in many ways attributable to the fact that we have high-stakes testing and the system that I'm here to say that needs to be better. But before we talk about needing to be better, I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is not a rejection in any way of what we have gone through over the last, say, 15 years. I think Ms. Regan and I can both say that from our perspectives, the educational experience that we provide students in Attleboro has improved significantly as a result of the work that we've done in response to our current accountability system. That being said, it is a flawed one. It is too narrowly focused on two subject matters, and it relies entirely on high-stakes testing for those two subject matters, you know, testing that takes place over a short number of days. It is hard to really accurately assess all that a student knows and is able to do in any testing of that nature. And, you know, it is also the case that, you know, whatever you test will drives what teachers teach. That is a basic fact of any educational system. And we think that by changing how we test, we can better drive our attempts to offer a better educational experience, which is what our strategic plan is all about. So these are all ways in which this matches what we're trying to do. It's also important to note that in many ways, our accountability system really is a measure of things other than the good work that we do. The two most significant factors in predicting educational success are educational attainment of parents and the socioeconomic status of parents. Those are by far and away the two most reliable indicators of how a student is going to perform in school. And it should come, it's no surprise, that a flawed accountability system, such as we have, would produce results that in many ways mirror those two factors in terms of the results that we get. So our accountability system here in Massachusetts largely mirrors the socioeconomic status of the community that's being measured. And so it says less about the quality of education in the community and more about how wealthy a community is in the first place. And by the way, you can apply that to the state as a whole. You know, Massachusetts is often, you know, quite proud of its status as the best state in the nation when it comes to education. It should be noted that it's also number one in the educational attainment of its citizens, and it's number one in terms of the wealth of its citizens. So, you know, again, when you talk about educational attainment and wealth, that's the predictor of success. That's true for the state as a whole, and it's true for the communities within it. So rather than measure wealth, which is what our accountability system inadvertently does in many ways, we're looking to develop a system that more accurately measures actual, you know, actual progress by the school itself. And the consortium is attacking this problem in two separate ways. The first is that it's working on better accountability measures through direct surveying of families and educators and students. What they have found is that, through their research, that when you ask people who actually know how strong their schools are, the perception that they have does not necessarily match the perception you would get. the perception you would get if you looked at the data that's produced by the current accountability system. So if I ask a roomful of people who have kids in the district and are familiar with what the district provides, they would have one perception of the schools. But if I gave a group of people who didn't have that same access to information about the district, just the accountability data that the current accountability system produces, they would have a different opinion. And so the idea is to try to produce data that that group that doesn't know about the system would be able to arrive at conclusions that better match what people who know more about the system would actually say. And so they are working on the kind of data collection that will help produce results so that if you give those results, those results will actually put you in line with what people think who know more about the schools themselves. So that's one part of the project. And the other is about performance assessments, which are an embedded assessment rather than a high-stakes testing situation that is, we believe in many ways, the future towards which we want to head in terms of how we measure our progress for student outcomes. So I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to Ms. Reagan, who's going to talk a little bit more about the performance assessments themselves.
So within the consortium, there are nine districts total, and all together we'll be collaborating on these assessments to validate them, calibrate them, and make them something that can be used for years to come. But within the performance assessments, we'll be participating in five days of training next year, and in that training, it'll span from task design all the way to calibration. Three schools in Attleboro will be participating. The high school will definitely be one of them, and then two other schools. As teachers are being trained outside of the district, within the district, we'll be bringing the information back and taking the time here to write the performance assessments, develop them, validate them, and test them out. But the bonus of all of this is that we'll have the opportunity to collaborate with other districts that are within the consortium to see how they are using some of the sample performance assessments in their own districts. The other piece is that this directly connects to our three district goals. And so the first goal with increasing community engagement, as Dave mentioned before, the school quality piece directly aligns with that, with focus groups that will be developed and created and through surveys with students, teachers, and families. For the second goal, relevant learning experiences, as Dave also mentioned before, assessment drives instruction, so having authentic performance assessments will then reflect on our instruction, our daily instruction, and then having more relevant experiences. And then finally, our creation of authentic performance assessments is the heart of all of this work. So, you know, looking at this big picture, our participation will result in a more dynamic and rich picture of what the schools and students in Attleboro can do.
So the consortium has been working to gain partners across the state, to get support from the legislature, and we've also been talking directly with DESI. It's important to note that while DESI is not in favor of necessarily abandoning their accountability system that they're very attached to, which should come as a surprise to no one, they are aware of the work and are comfortable with us pursuing these goals because we are still accountable under the current accountability system. And they've sort of, you know, are going to let us go out and try to show a different way, and will pay attention to our results and keep a close eye on things because they're curious about it as well. So none of this changes what we're doing. We'll still be testing under the current system, but this gives us a chance to work on some things that we believe fits with what our vision of how things should go are. And we feel very strongly that, you know, when you teach the right things, the assessments take care of themselves. We feel pretty strongly that our results on those high-stakes assessments will be better if we better focus our efforts on what we know kids need to learn and succeed. And therefore, you know, trying to get us a little bit less, you know, maniacally focused on test scores, we think will actually get us better test scores because we can put more of the emphasis on kids', you know, engagement and enthusiasm, and we think that that will result in better learning, sincerely. So this is what the project's about. You have with you a resolution. This resolution has already been passed by most of the other school committees in the consortium and several other organizations statewide. In passing the resolution, you would basically be taking a public stance of support of the work of the consortium. And then you also have the grant application. We applied for the grant. The money coming in at, you know, fifty-eight thousand is a significant sum of money, and this would help over the next two years to pay for this work to be done on the performance assessments.
Mr. Gaddis?
In looking at the list of other districts, I'm glad to see that a couple of them are something that we're typically compared with anyway. But I also noticed in terms of the governments, it's being co-chaired by the Framingham Superintendent and the President of the Revere Teachers Association. I'm excited to see that collaboration between administration and faculty. Have you gotten any feedback from our?
Yes, thank you. I remiss in mentioning that this is through a partnership with the Teachers Association here in Attleboro. The board of the consortium is a collection of superintendents and union presidents. We absolutely are working with the teachers on this one.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Storres?
Will the fifty-eight thousand dollars of the grant, will that cover all stipends over the two-year period, or is that only a partial coverage?
That's going to cover the work that's being planned under this. So all of the, there's no extra cost to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
This is a really, really big deal. This is an opportunity to put Attleboro at the forefront, and rather than reacting to the state assessment system, to build potentially a new way of thinking about how do we evaluate schools, not just from a what can our students do, and just the vision of this getting away from the multiple-choice essay-type assessments where the computer eyes easy to score, and something more engaging, more challenging, more inspiring, more relevant to the students that it's going to reflect the work that they're going to do. Attleboro also suffers from a perception gap, one that I shared before I moved to this community. And what I know now from being involved in the schools is that we have educators who are innovative, who work tirelessly, who are as good as any that I've ever interacted with. I think a lot of our parents know that. But I think, and we've seen it just in some of our PTO meetings, that the real estate agents and other members from outside of the community don't know it. And Mr. Sawyer touched upon this, but I've seen the work that they've done in Somerville in terms of creating a public dashboard that is visible, that we can share out and show just the satisfaction, not only just the satisfaction of what's really positive, but also a learning tool for the district. Where can we improve? What items, what areas of the school community are we not necessarily satisfied with, and how do we improve upon that and get that data without relying on anecdotal evidence? And what I think, you know, long-term is that there was one of the, one of the principals talked about building better assessments, or helping teachers to build better assessments, not just for these, you know, the one-off high-stake tests, but continually so that, you know, teachers are continuing to develop authentic tasks. The fact that it's grant-funded is, you know, I'm pleased that our district has a chance to add its talents and to lead moving forward. So I think this is a really huge opportunity for us.
Great.
Thank you. All right, so can we have a motion to approve the resolution on the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessments?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the grant for the grant title being the Center for Collaborative Education from the Mass Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And thank you both for that.
Thank you.
Do you want to call Mr. Fattato and Mr. Rooney up to the table for a discussion Whoever wants to begin?
As you saw in the packets, we, in consultation with Central Office, made a proposal of athletic fees for the 2016, 2017 school year. I believe, I can speak for Mr. Sawyer from the meeting that we had, in terms of rolling this presentation out, that it's his vision that we have no fees, or at least marginal fees at some point in time. But, you know, the financial reality is, is that we realize that athletics, much like many other constituencies within the district, have to contribute to the budget deficit that we face. But I have a fear of pricing ourselves out because there are so many of our students who do come to school because of our athletic programs, our drama program, our music programs. And so we are blessed with many athletic booster clubs, not only the Attleboro Varsity Booster Club, which provides an umbrella of support to our athletic program, but we're also grateful to the Gridiron Club, the Attleboro Lacrosse Association, the Cheer Boosters, just to name a few. And so I am confident, in consultation with Mr. Hul, our athletic director, that the proposed fees that we have shared with you will help us to, you know, contribute to the problem of the budget deficit that we face, but also will at least be more manageable for our families. I do have some statistics that I would like to share with you that support the proposal that we've made. Attleboro is obviously a member of the Hockamok League, but we're also a member of the MIAA District C. District C is sixty schools that have athletic programs, and it is largely geographic. All twelve of the Hockamok League schools are in District C. There was a, there was a survey this year that was put out to all sixty of the District C schools for user fees for the school year that we just concluded. Fifty-four schools participated in the survey. Of those fifty-four, only five do not charge fees. So forty-nine, forty-nine of the fifty-four who responded do charge fees for athletics. Thirty-two of them charge two hundred or more. Seven more of them charge a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety dollars. So therefore, thirty-nine out of forty-nine charged more than Attleboro High School charged for 2015, 2016. Twenty-three of them in the past school year charged more than what we are proposing. There are some schools that charge three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and seventy-five dollars per sport. There are nine schools that charge two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred. And there are a lot of schools that charge more than two hundred, which is what we are proposing per sport. I think it's also important to put in perspective, and I'm giving you this perspective as a parent of two former high school athletes and one current middle school athlete, that although we realize that all families are feeling some sort of a pinch in this economy, athletics for many families is a priority. And just some comparative shopping, so to speak, that I've done in preparation for tonight's meeting, my son who participates in the White Hawks football program will pay two hundred and fifty dollars for his upcoming season. Cheerleaders for the White Hawks will pay two hundred and fifty dollars for their upcoming season. Many of our middle school baseball players participate in a program, an AAU program based out of Attleboro called the Badgers. This past season, that was seven hundred and fifty dollars for the season. One of the more popular local AAU basketball programs is the Boston Bobcats out of Mansfield. That's anywhere between five hundred and sixty and six hundred and five dollars, depending on the number of tournaments that you just play in the spring season. City of Attleboro has a strong metro basketball program where they compete against other cities and towns. The rate for that was either one hundred and ninety if you played rec league, or two hundred and forty if you did not play rec league, plus twenty to twenty-five dollars per player if you participated in extra tournaments over Christmas or over February vacation. Explosion soccer is anywhere from eight hundred and fifty dollars to eighteen hundred dollars per season based on a player's age. And so, you know, it is not foreign for families to have to step up financially to be able to participate. Again, we do realize that the fees that we've proposed do represent a significant increase. We still propose that students who are on free lunch will not pay any fees, and students who receive reduced lunch will pay forty percent of the proposed fees.
Thank you. And thank you to you and Mr. Hul and the administration for the work you did on this. I think, you know, it's important. I think you guys did a very good job in keeping these numbers down as much as possible. I know when we first started talking about this, the, you know, the rumor mill out there where that fees were going to double or triple, and, you know, it's good to see that they're not, obviously, we wish they weren't going up, but I think these increases are responsible and kept as low as possible. And I think the background information on what surrounding districts do, I think, is very helpful to see that, you know, even with the proposed increases, Attleboro is still, you know, is not an outlier. It's still in the middle of the pack, and there are, you know, a lot of districts that are doing the same thing or more. So I think that's very helpful.
And we realize, I'm sorry to interrupt, we realize we are still going to have to cut some corners here. We realize that it is going to impact participation, you know, on some levels. And again, I cannot stress enough how appreciative we are to all the booster clubs for the tremendous support that they give us as well.
Mr. Gaddis?
Just by my quick math, just to make sure, the per-season cost and personal. Were you a math teacher?
I was a math teacher, yes.
Not exact, but rough estimates. So to Mr. Withers' point, it's good that they're not as high as we were concerned that they were. And I'll echo what the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago, because I still agree with what Mr. Tyler, Mr. Storres were saying regarding the concerns about, like you said, pricing ourselves out for a lot of our athletes. So I am grateful that these aren't as high as we worried about, but still disappointed that we have to do this. So, thank you. We are as well.
Mr. Storres?
So for Mr. Fattato, these increases will cover the hundred and one thousand dollars that we were talking at the last meeting?
Not entirely. You know, the current fees at the end of the year have a surplus to them. You know, athletic operations sometimes has a surplus to it. So between those sources, that hundred and one will be covered, yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Has there been any discussion or implementation of collecting data on the number of student athletes that we had participate this year? Do we have a handle on that figure and ways of comparing it to next? Because I think what we really need to understand, too, is what's the elasticity here? You know, we're concerned about melt. Is that concern a reality? And, you know, if so, how do we mitigate that? Are there ways of?
Yeah. Given the fact that all of our registrations are online through Family ID, Mr. Hul and his assistant, Ms. Cuffrey, should be able to pull that data fairly easily. We have asked Mr. Fattato to consider pursuing an online payment system because we do realize that with the fees going up, that some families would like to pay by credit card, and then they can pay off their credit card, you know, on a monthly basis, rather than just completely debit it from their account at one time.
Mr. Gaddis?
And these changes will be in the next year's And, and these changes will be in the next year's handbook? We're early enough to get them in there?
All right, can we have a motion to approve the proposed athletic user fees 2016-2017?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Turney.
Thank you.
Moving on to our fiscal year 17 budget. Mr. Fattato, first, I think it would be worthwhile for you to update the committee on negotiations with the Administration Union?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we, prior to the city passing its, its budget, we had discussions with Central Office leadership, including school building principals, as well as the Administrators' Union, which represents the district's Assistant Principal, CTE Director, and Network Director, to talk about, at least providing some leadership in terms of the budget issue, and some givebacks to the district for next year. Through those discussions with the three groups, again, the kind of Central Office Directors and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, the Administrators' Union, and the Principals, we, at the end of the day Thursday, had arrived at about $52,000 in, in concession to, to the budget problem. So, we were happy with that outcome. We feel that that will at least allow us to bring back one more teacher than prior to those discussions. And, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't heavy lifting. Everybody was very partial to that outcome.
So you said that's about 52,000 in savings?
About 52,000 dollars in savings.
Well, that's certainly good news, and we're thankful to the Administration, this Administration Union for, you know, again, taking a leadership role in, in this, in this issue. You know, we have reached out to the other unions. We have, we asked the, the AEA to open their contract to discuss strictly making concessions for next fiscal year. To date, they have elected not to discuss potential concessions. So, you know, that's where we are. But we thank the Administration, Administrative Union for, for what they've done. Moving on with, with the budget. Mr. Sawyer, if you want to update, you or Mr. Fattato, update the committee on where we are with positions cut and restorations?
Sure. So, to review, we originally identified 64 positions to cut in response to the 4.2 million dollar shortfall that we were facing at that time back in, in early April. We then later also cut another six positions when we eliminated the middle school academic coaches, which brought the total number of cuts up to 70 as part of the process to eliminate the shortfall. Through the process, the school committee made cuts, the state increased funding slightly, the city kicked in another 800,000 dollars. When you put it all together, we reduced the shortfall down to 1.1 million dollars, which was certainly less than what was needed when we cut 70 positions. So, on June 1st, in light of all that information, we began plans to restore, at that time, 27 positions. We thought that, given the way things were projected, that we'd be able to bring back at least 27. You know, 27, when you're dealing with estimates on what the final budget number's going to be, and how much, you know, salaries are going to cost, you know, you have to kind of make a conservative estimate on what you, what you can do. So, we picked the number 27 based on those estimates, and we began identifying which positions we thought there should be, and who, in fact, would be called back as a result of that. And so, last week, we did notify, actually, something around, I believe it was 32 employees, that they would be called back. Now, you say, well, you're restoring 27 positions, how are you calling back more than 27 people? At that time, we were also able to call back people to fill positions for resignations, retirements, non-renewals. So, there were other vacancies that had been left unfilled for next year that, while we were doing callbacks, we thought we'd fill those up as well. So, we've now notified 32 employees that they will be receiving a callback. The Personnel Office is processing the paperwork on those callbacks, and those letters will go out this, this week. So, the 70 cuts is now being reduced down to 43 cuts as a result of 27 restored positions. But it is important to note that while we only have, you know, about 25 people still on the callback list, we, we still have cut 43 positions, because people retire, people take jobs in other districts, and so forth and so on. So, the number of people still laid off at this point, while still high, is, you know, almost half as many of the positions we've lost as a district in preparation for the FY17 budget.
And just for clarification, for the, for the public's benefit, the 43 positions that, that are still cut include the, the coaches as well, correct?
The coaches are still cut. I can also tell you that, you know, in restoring positions, we did so based on enrollment. We're trying to tackle our class size issue first and foremost. Class size at the elementary schools as a result of this is an average of 25. And that class size at the middle schools, as a result of these moves, my number, where did I put it, has been reduced from, if you remember, at the very worst point of it, the class sizes were projected to be in the mid to high 30s at the middle schools, and these are now at, where did I put it? Just under 30. So, we do have one grade, K-8, K to 8, which is grade 7. It's in all three middle schools, where class size is currently in the low 30s. With the exception of that grade, we have, with these restored positions, brought class size down, K to 8, under 30. So, I'm very happy that that picture has improved. Class size at the high school is very hard to, to project until they finish a schedule. The, the choices they make will really affect what the, you know, what class sizes look like at the high school. And, you know, the funny thing about averages is that you can have a lot of classes close to the average, and you can have classes, you know, quite far from the average, balancing themselves out. So, the high school, it's, the picture isn't quite clear, but there, we're projecting class sizes in the, right at the very bottom end of the low 30, so around 30, 31 at this time.
Ms. Gills?
So, I take a priority then, like if, you know, a miracle happens and someone gives us the million dollars, would be starting with grade 7?
Yeah, so, the, it's, it's actually, we anticipate that in the next week or so, we will be able to restore a few more positions. There are a couple of variables that aren't yet determined, Tri-County being one of them. We hope to hear on July 1st how many students are going to Tri-County. If, you know, we've, we've projected 10. If the number's close to 10, then, you know, that's settled, and we can, we can move on. If it's significantly more than 10, then we have a problem. If it's, you know, significantly less than 10, then that's more money we can spend. There are a couple other variables that are being determined. And then, really, the biggest factor right now is that we're moving from estimates to actual figures. So, all of these cuts were based on estimates. We said, all right, well, the average salary of, of a person made cut is this, and the average, you know, we're dealing with, with estimates. At this point, we now know how much the people that we've cut cost. We know how much we, you know, in dollars we save. We know how much the people we're bringing back cost. And so, as we go through and figure out exactly, you know, when we brought back 27 people, we projected, we said we can bring back 27, because we guessed how much 27 people would cost. Well, we now have identified who those 27 people are, and we don't have to guess what that costs us. We can figure out to the penny what that costs us. So, as we determine those things, we are anticipating that we can actually bring back a few more. I hope to know, again, within a week or so, exactly how many that is. It isn't a significant number of people. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. You know, that, that number, 43, I'm hoping will get into the high 30s, but, you know, we're not dropping down, and, you know, we're not cutting that number in half or anything like that. When we figure out what that number is, we'll certainly do that and bring those positions back. To answer your question, yes, grade 7 is an absolute high priority. And then, you know, the reason why the numbers are highest at the high school is because we prioritize the younger kids first. You know, we can certainly talk about why we did that, but I think most people understand the reasoning on that one. So, the high school really needs support as well, some relief as well. So, I would say, as a whole, secondary is looking to get some relief with any new positions, with grade 7 being a high priority.
Mr. Tyler, then Mr. Gettys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just, I'm, I'm not trying to criticize, I just, I'm trying to look at the thought process to this. I mean, I'm sure all the administrations went through great pains going through this list of cuts, and didn't want, you know, we should be adding positions, not, not eliminating, that's, that's for absolutely true. I just want to know the thought process in the cuts at the middle school on all three, and with the technology education. It seems to me like we're just getting access to these students for the technology, yet, so is there, is there, were these the only people that were going to do it, or is there other people, and this was somebody that was going to be added on, or?
So, when we, when we had to make the cuts, it makes sense to cut, and this is what happened at the elementary level as well, you, you want your cuts to be a share of classroom teachers, but also the special subjects as well, because as you, you know, if you kept all your specials teachers and you reduced your classroom teachers, you'd have high class sizes in your, in your, in your regular classrooms, but you'd have, you know, still the lower class sizes in your specials. So you have to cut something to keep class sizes in the building pretty much equal. And then, so the, the question is, well, what, what do you cut? And the, the thinking is that we have for some time identified our technology program in middle school as something that needs to be changed. In fact, the, ironically, I mean, the technology teachers themselves have discussed the fact that the way we are teaching technology in this district has to be rethought. You know, technology is not a subject you learn in isolation in a room down the hall. As a model, that, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. And so, I understand why some people look at that as saying that, you know, we're trying to increase technology, so why are you cutting that, those teachers? But part of the reason is, is that we're looking to make a change in that area anyways. And so, the thinking was that by making this cut in this moment, we sort of accelerate the need to make that change. So, I mean, that is, that is the thinking.
I mean, I do agree to some fact, yes, we don't want to have one building, I mean, one classroom in a building, and that's where everybody goes for technology, but my concern is, it's brand new to us, to, to some extent. Not, not brand new, but the way we're doing it now is going to be different than, than the way in the past. And I'm going to be offering enough support to the teachers on basically integrating that technology in the classroom where it does belong. I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm just, I'm worried about they're not going to have the support of something that's kind of relatively
Yeah, so, the, you know, the projects, the, the Wi-Fi project that we're engaging in the district this year is going to result in an environment in which, you know, kids can access the internet in every classroom and in all of our middle schools with the kind of bandwidth, so that they all can actually use it. I think that that environment is going to do far more help kids access technology in the educational setting than, you know, having a class called Technology once a week, to be kind of, to be quite honest about it.
And as part of that, this year, especially at the middle schools, we provided professional development for our teachers during the school year, and using the Chromebooks in the classroom with the Google platform, going all the way from Google Drive to Google Docs, Google Sheets, all of the different software that's available for them there. So, they have started to integrate it more on a regular basis, more than just on a one-time, let's-go-to-technology class basis.
My, my last question, if I could. Is there, is there some way that, there's a priority list of if there's any type of funds that come back into this district, which positions are going to be refilled? I mean, there has to be
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's good enough to read there. Again, I'm not trying to criticize, I realize this is a terrible thing to do, a job, but I, I just have concerns, it looks like we're, we're really going to regress when we, when you see these areas that are, are being presented to the board tonight. I'm glad you did put it all in. Again, thank you.
Mr. Gettys, then Ms. Gills?
To echo Mr. Tyler's point, I think anytime we're, we're cutting art, or technology, or music, it's, it's a sign of potential regression within the district. Just for, just to reiterate points we've made previously, the, the adjusted average class sizes that we're now projecting are still higher than this year's average class sizes, and still significantly higher than we think is an ideal average class size.
Yeah, exactly. The class sizes district-wide are higher than we would recommend or think is what's in the best interest of kids.
And a, a follow-up to that, you had mentioned the additional five positions to incorporate resignations, retirements. At, at some point, and I don't remember where or when I had heard this, but I, I feel like there was some discussion that early retirement may not be an option for some folks, is that, I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Fattato, if you can talk to that, if, is early retirement an option to bring some additional teachers back if we have some folks leaving other positions, or?
I'm not sure what you mean by early retirement. If you mean incentive program, that's not
Yeah.
that's not something we control, that's controlled at the municipal level.
Okay.
So, it would have to be a city decision to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I do think that's an important point, just for the sole purpose of that is a question, I think, committee members get a lot of, or, you know, well, why don't you have a early retirement incentive program like you would see oftentimes in the, in the private sector? And, you know, it is important that, you know, the public be aware that it's not something the school department can just implement. So, thank you for asking that. Mr. Quinn, then Ms. Storrs?
These decisions are not easy ones, and, and what I want to say is that what I appreciate in looking at this is that we've really tried to insulate the elementary schools, where we're building those foundational skills that will, you know, serve as, you know, the, the springboard for all the other levels. And, you know, particularly when we talk about, thinking about how crucial the, the early math and the early reading is, from my standpoint, just because that's where my experience is, is that the shift from, you know, learning to read, and to reading to learn, and making sure, and then you know, Ms. Regan is, is a literacy expert, that just how crucial making sure that the individual attention, keeping those class sizes, well, 25 is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. I can breathe a, a little bit easier, not much, you know, based off of what I'm seeing with the elementary. You know, Mr. Tyler, I think you raised a really interesting point about technology and education, although I think, long-term, what we'd really like to see is that technology's embedded throughout the curriculum, and so that way, it doesn't have to be isolated to one class, but, you know, across all disciplines. And I think with the new, our new STEM coordinator, that will help ease that, but that's going to take some time and, and transition. One question I, I did have is, just thinking about, I was looking at, particularly, there were a couple 7th grade split positions that were, you know, not restored. Is that because, particularly at Brennan and Womsett, is that because in those grade, in those buildings in those buildings, we've got a little bit lower, a little bit closer to the low 30 at that point, or?
So, I'm not sure if, how this played out the way it did, but for whatever reason, in all three middle schools, seventh grade was the lowest of the high class sizes. So, when they restored a position to three out of four grades, they went to the three that had higher class sizes. And so, what you have left in each building is the lowest of what was the worst-case scenario.
Okay.
It just happens to be seventh grade in all three buildings.
And what's the student load, I know it's 33, you know, about low 30 per class, but what's the overall student load? Are we talking about four sections of 30 kids or so, or are there five sections? I guess, you know, is a middle school teacher going to see, you know, 120 kids a day, or 150 kids a day, or is that going to vary?
It varies. It varies.
Okay.
Because we have, you know, I mean, even in one grade at one school, it varies.
Okay.
You know, you have, I go with Wamsada, fifth grade, which I know best.
Okay.
You have one team with two teachers and one team with three teachers.
And?
So, that, you know, that changes, but the team with two teachers has, you know, basically 50 kids.
And I guess maybe a better way of asking this, how many preps do they have? Does that, does that make sense, in terms of their schedule? Yeah, or is it a little even trickier from that? It varies. Okay.
Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, just wanted to note, I also appreciate the fact that there's an obvious focus on the elementary level. The fact that more than 50% of the positions that were initially to be cut have been restored, from what I'm seeing, it looks like no one school is taking a greater burden. I'm seeing most schools with one position, some with maybe two. I think that definitely shows that we're trying our best to obviously spread the reductions, but also keep that focus on that elementary level. One question I did have, I noticed with the CTE, there is not reductions of full position, just a kind of a reduction in positions such as automotive welding. Can you explain how that might affect those programs?
So, it was based on enrollment, you know, much like special education students, you know, we have a responsibility under regulation to let kids, you know, finish those programs that they start. So, those cuts are, you know, allow us to meet those obligations. It just means that there was a little bit of extra staffing based on the enrollment of those programs.
So, that does not mean in any way that we're cutting CTE, it'll be level one, two, and three, and exploratory in all of those programs.
Right. I should also point out, when we talk about elementary, and, you know, to reiterate, the class sizes at our elementary schools are too high. That goes, I think, without saying, I think we all understand and appreciate that. But, we did put a lot of staff into the elementary schools to ensure that those class sizes got down to, you know, something closer, and that was the top priority in restoring positions. But, in this exercise, I think it's very clear to the administration that under these budgetary conditions, with the staffing levels that we have, this community cannot afford five neighborhood elementary schools. That cutting the staff that way makes it so that it's very difficult to move the needle in a grade without having, you know, to, when you carve up your grades in the school by five grades per school, you know, adding one teacher to a school only affects class size in one of those grades. So, that's one-fifth of the school. And as a result of that, that teacher will make class size go from being, you know, too high to being much, much lower than the average everywhere else. So, it limits our ability to use staff strategically, to try to nudge numbers. You know, the elementary numbers are considerably lower than middle and high school, which, again, was intentional. If you have to make these choices, of course, this is the one you make. But, it wasn't, there was no matter of degree in this. We either had class sizes in the 30s that we all knew were unacceptable, or you drop them down, and the class sizes dropped to below 25. There's no way to say, "Okay, well, could we live with 26," you know, and save a staff to, remember, to put someplace else. We can't have that discussion, because with five local schools, to, you know, to fix the class size, you know, you have to, you're dividing by too few a number of teachers per grade, per school. So, you know, it's part of the strategic plan to look at how we configure the district anyways. But, this exercise, I think, really, you know, points out that there's a, there's a limit on our flexibility when you have so many neighborhood schools offering grades K to five in one building.
That's interesting. I think, you know, the redesignation of our schools was something that I think that interested me, and I think the first meeting of this term, that the lab was looking into. I think it's something that's important for us to do. You know, I said that, given our budget situation before, we haven't got into this budget year. So, you know, given what you're saying now, it seems to me that, you know, it should be even more of a priority in going forward with that group. So, you know, I would be interested in hearing, you know, some progress, you know, when we really pick up again in earnest in the fall, or, you know, sometime, you know, soon after that. You know, I know you're not going to have an answer, obviously, but just progress on what the plan is and looking into it, and, you know, what could be done.
Yeah, I mean, the general plan is to provide research on the topic, you know, what are best practices?
Mm-hmm.
And then to engage the community in focus groups to get input from, you know, all the stakeholders, to try to develop a plan for what we think will best meet the needs of our students.
And I assume, has a part, has a process of looking at the logistics of our building, has that started, buildings, has that started yet? Because I assume that would play into, play into it as well.
Certainly, the buildings themselves, you know, sort of frame the discussion and limit what we're capable of doing, but I'm not sure what you mean beyond that.
Well, you know, what, you know, what, what changes we even could implement if, you know, if we determined that they were, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so, we'd certainly frame any choices in terms of what's possible with the buildings that we have.
So, on our budget, we have been moving forward all along, not knowing what the ultimate number we'd be working with was. And in doing that, we've made about $1.9 million in cuts, round numbers. And we knew that what we had left was staff reductions. We now know the amount, I guess, we know the amount the city has approved to this point. I know there's some question based on what happened in the city council last week, if there'll be additional funds coming, but if that happens, that's not really something that's appropriate for budgeting anyway, because it's a one-time change, and we have no idea if it's, if anything else is coming to the schools or not. But, the city council did approve the mayor's budget, which was for $70,369,393. Is the number correct?
$380.
$380? And with our level service budget of $73,500,680, left us with a deficit of about $3.1 million. With the $1.9 million in cuts, that leaves about $1.2 million in the staff reductions. I know, can you give the exact numbers there on the staff, the amount for staff reductions?
It's, it's just under $1.2 million. And as Mr. Sawyer pointed out, it was 43 positions at this point. Again, as we go through the recall, and as the actual salaries being recalled get identified, we are able to make some slight modifications as we go forward.
And, you know, this is really, it's a little bit of a different situation in that it's still very fluid in that, you know, as the tri-county variable is determined, you know, that the cuts could go down slightly in the staff reduction, or could go up slightly, and then the staff reductions could go down. But, what we do know is that the municipal funding amount is $70,369,380. And so, tonight, what we need to do is we need to, we need to approve that number, the budget that we've been working with, with the cuts that we've, that we've already instituted. So, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget of $70,369,380.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you explain, just for everybody, what approval of this budget means? If this committee approves this budget, doesn't mean we support this budget.
Yeah, no, I mean, absolutely not. We're not, we're not, it's an approval of the budget so the administrator, so the school department can run for the next fiscal year, so the administration can move forward in paying the bills and taking the district to the next level and doing what they can. It's by no means an endorsement that this amount is sufficient to fund the schools for fiscal year 17. I think this committee's been clear that we don't believe it's sufficient. I think that, you know, me personally, I'm thankful that that's the deficit number down to the number that we did. I'm thankful to the administration for the work they did on the cuts. I'm thankful to the community for the priority they placed on this, to put pressure on the city to increase funding. I think that was helpful to help get the deficit down. And I'm thankful to, you know, the committee members for all the time that we put into this. I mean, this has been a standing agenda item for, you know, months now, and it's been a long haul. But, back to the original point, it's, you know, a vote tonight's by no means an endorsement of the number. It's simply approval of the number so that things can proceed as necessary. Mr. Gudis?
I would echo all of your appreciations. Knowing that this is the number that we'll be working with, and this is where we are at for this year, is it too early, Mr. Fattado, to think, obviously, salary, personnel salaries are a huge variable, but for FY '18, is there any reason to think that operationally, anything would, would be able to come off in terms of maintenance or anything like that, or? I guess, is there anything down the road that would, that would make you think that FY '18 would be any better?
Yeah, actually, as we, as we sit here today, there are a couple of things. One is, you know, and this is subject to change, but one is the situation the Health Insurance Trust Fund is in. You know, that's a condition where we have, as everyone here knows, at the beginning of this new year's budget, we were thinking that the increase was going to be about a half million dollars. We now know that because of surpluses in historical accounts, that that, those increases for the next three years are not coming. So, that's a relief and a benefit for '18. And sadly, the layoffs we had to enact to meet the '17 budget imply that those costs are not going to be present in FY '18. Again, sadly and unfortunately, but, so that will reduce the requirement in '18 on that front. So, you know, I don't think, in addition to having the tax agreement with the city, I don't think we're going to be in quite the circumstance we're in this, this cycle.
And although it, that will reduce that requirement from the budget, that doesn't necessarily mean that we, cuts won't be necessary for next year.
Oh, no, no, there will be cuts, but, yeah, and the need for those positions out there are still going to exist.
Right. I think, you know, a follow-up on that, I think what we've said, you know, is, in the past few years, is that, you know, level service funding isn't sufficient to move the district forward. I think next year, that's going to take on an added weight, where, you know, level service funding next year, even more than usual, is not going to be sufficient, because level service funding next year will be with a lot, having just made a loss of 40 positions.
Right.
And we need to get back in the schools as soon as possible. So, I think Mr. Fattado's point that, you know, I think there might be some reason to think that we won't start the budget process looking at such a huge deficit, because of, you know, the two beneficial points of the tax agreement with the city and also the Health Insurance Trust Funds. And, you know, the third point being the negative, which is that our level service funding number's going to be lower than it would have been had we not had to institute such a high number of layoffs.
Yeah, we have publicly said on multiple occasions that we are predicting next year will be worse than this year, that '18 would be worse than '17. But, that was predicated on the assumption that we would, you know, find a way to avoid 43 cuts. That, that, you know, didn't happen means that that terrible moment is sort of now, not next year, and that, you know, the picture for next year is sadly improved by that factor.
Instead of kicking the can down the road, we did the reverse.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
I think we all can, you know, remember the time when we were a little kid and a helium balloon slips out of our hand, and we just watch it kind of float away. And to a certain extent, I'm feeling that way with our actual, our needs-based budget, because the level service now becomes, like, to reiterate, that 43 positions still cut. I have no doubt that the innovation and ingenuity of our teachers is going to increase, because that's what they seem to continually do. But, I do feel it, it's slipping away, unless there's some sort of structural change that we need. We've had a lot of folks in the community actively engaged and thankfully advocating to mitigate some of that gap, and I think that's been done. I also think the challenge now is to kind of pivot to see what kind of time and resources the community can provide to help, you know, ensure, you know, in terms of volunteering, I know we've got some room parents, so how can we make sure the students are still getting some sort of attention? What kind of volunteers can we have? How can we help strengthen the school system through our time and resources that are not coming in through, you know, allocated tax dollars? And I think that's, that's going to be crucial, because again, I see that balloon slipping further and further away.
Mr. Larson?
I guess I think we're going to be in almost as much trouble next year as we are this year. I don't see the state doing anything different with their funding formula, because that would take political willpower that I just don't think Beacon Hill has. So, I don't expect a change there. I don't expect any new money from there. You know, I think the city's done a pretty good job of, you know, padding where they can, but, you know, they have limited resources to increase funding as well. So, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we're back here next year, looking at another 15 or 20 people that we don't have anymore, in addition to what we have now. But, hope I'm wrong, but, we'll see what happens.
Doug?
And just for the committee's benefit, the kind of fourth component to '18 is it's a contract year. So, whatever that, you know, brings to the table.
Mr. Tyler?
Yeah.
Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, I do want to, again, thank those who have advocated in the community for the schools. To think where we'd be right now if we didn't end up with the additional $800,000 that we received, this number would be a lot more extreme. So, I think that that was very important and has mitigated this to a point where it's still not pretty, but it's, you know, it's a lot better than it could have been, so.
Yeah, and I agree, and I'll reiterate, you know, on top of that, I'll reiterate something I said at a lot of the PTO meetings, which is, you know, the question was, you know, what should we do? And my answer was always continue to do what you're doing, continue to advocate for the schools and make it a priority, because it did make a difference. It made a difference in the initial agreement with the city, and it made a difference in, you know, in not letting up to say that we need to, we need to keep looking, you know, we're able, you know, additional funds were found as well. And I think, you know, the solution going forward is to continue to make this an issue so that, you know, the community, the schools, we, the city, we don't forget, we're not, you know, flat-footed next year. So, that would be my two cents. So, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve a budget of
So, moved.
Take a roll call vote. If anyone needs to abstain from any part of the budget, they can announce in their vote. Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Gendare, propose, I have a motion to approve the school committee meeting schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just so you notice that, you know, we only have one monthly meeting over the summer months of July and August. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed subcommittee meeting schedule. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed subcommittee meeting schedule for September 2016 through June 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
With all of the, as I'm sure Mr. Tyler will, will bring up in his infrastructure subcommittee report, with all of the maintenance and capital improvement issues throughout the buildings, should we increase the number of subcommittee meetings that are scheduled for next year? Or it looks like we only have four on the agenda?
You know, I think the subcommittees are always free to, you know, schedule, you know, additional meetings as needed, like the policy subcommittee did today. And so, you know, as, as things arise, you know, what I would say is that, you know, Mr. Tyler can feel free or, you know, to suggest a special meeting. If I'm aware of something that needs to be addressed, I'll, you know, communicate with Mr. Tyler and get a special meeting. But unless Mr. Tyler thinks it's a real necessity to have more regular meetings scheduled, I would...
No, I think, you know, on a need-to basis, and I do believe there's going to be a need to have much more, but because of the way we like to travel around to the different schools, logistics kind of involved and not overburdening in the administration, especially Mark when we're into certain type of, where he has to kind of focus on what he does. So I do anticipate having more meetings of what's on that schedule, but I'd like to still be flexible this weekend.
Absolutely. I was just wondering with, I mean, with four, I think it was 4.1 in our proposed budget, $4.1 million towards maintenance costs and knowing how, how that could be significantly reduced by some of the maintenance improvements that could be done to the buildings. Didn't know if it was, if it was a way we could push those forward, but on a need-to basis, makes sense to me. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Next, subcommittee reports. Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The infrastructure and facilities subcommittee did meet on June 22nd, and we met at Studley Elementary School. First item of discussion was the policy use of the concession stand. We were informed by the administration that Mr. Hul and Mr. In-Principle Rooney are working on language, and that would be including contractual language of any entity that wants to use the concession stand, what those fees would entitle. They're not, it's not a, we're only looking to maintain the building and future costs. We're not looking to make a profit out of this. It's just, there's going to be nominal costs that are involved. So of course, as Mr. Rooney said earlier, the booster clubs do a lot, and so do a lot of the PTOs, and they do a lot for the community, and we want to keep those costs as low as possible. So they're trying to get a point on that. We did have a couple of ideas in the past about how we could be moving forward. We did reach out to one entity, and basically, it's just a little too much for them to take on as they're a volunteer group. So it's our responsibility as custodians of the building to come up with that. So they're working on that language. I am happy to say that the very next day, I did receive a text, and they issued the permanent building placement board. So that's very good, the option for the access to the stand. So that was a big milestone for the region. So we do anticipate that our meeting, our next meeting, to have that language to unfold. And of course, that will be put into the policy subcommittee for approval. Our next item was, to continue kind of with the gloom and doom, the year, we have, again, serious boiler issues at Willett and a couple of other schools. These both, these boilers are original to the building. They've long surpassed their expectancy, if you will. The cost that they've gotten so far, between $112,000 and $90,000. The low end being, if they wanted to get a boiler, that actually would not act as a hot water heater. So that's, even though it does sound like a significant reduction in funds, I don't think it's something that we really want to go down and do. We want the units that way for a reason. These items have been on the capital improvement list for the city on urgent status for over 10 years. And I don't want to say the city council is actually endorsing these year after year saying there is a need. I think we all know what's going to happen if the boiler goes down. And I think we all know when a boiler is most likely to go down, and that's during winter months. And what would happen if we had to close the school for a couple of days, especially just one school? Like, Willett being the high priority right now. There's been patches made by our wonderful maintenance staff, but they only hold for so long. So they're, they're looking to get best price plans right now, but it's, it's not looking good. And I think the subcommittee had, you know, related to Jason, that we need to have some type of plan in place if the emergency does happen. So he's putting one together. Hopefully, we don't have to go that way. I think we all know, as Jason actually said too, and anybody in this room knows, if you plan on having something replaced in your house, like a water heater, whatever, and you can, you can wait six months while you can call up a plumber, get the water heater, and everything just kind of goes along. But if you call them up on a Sunday in an emergency, the price is going to be used. So that's what we're looking at here. We want to come up with some type of plan to get these items before they do actually fail and a central loss of schools for that time, and then certainly any extra damage it could cause when a boiler or something of this magnitude goes. These, like I say, these units are original to the schools, so they're all overdue for replacement. And with that, I would say, and air conditioning too, we're having air conditioning problems at some of our other schools too. Again, original units to the buildings. I don't know why they're being put off so far on the capital improvement list because as we've seen, especially at Studley, when you get these other units in, they're so much more cost-effective, they're, they're, my gosh, a tenth of the size of the old monsters that were down there. And a lot of them can be actually monitored and programmed from a home status, but the maintenance and the patient or the custodian of the building. So, again, we're not sure why these things have stalled after the city council has approved them. And again, Mark's just putting the prices together, we're trying to find the best bargains that we can, but it's only a matter of time. And that time is, from Jason's professional opinion, is looking to be very soon. And that's not a good thing. So again, they're going to work on, they're going to get the prices, and I guess everybody's going to, you know, keep their fingers crossed. And hopefully, it doesn't happen. Spot of good news is the Wi-Fi issues. We talked about that. The Wi-Fi is working beyond expectations when it was actually put in. So that's good news, and I do believe that Mark said they figure by the startup of school that the upper elementary is the middle would have their Wi-Fi running, and the devices that those schools no longer need would be given to the high school to increase the broadband or whatever, the strength on that. Is that pretty accurate on that, Mark? Okay. So that, that was one good part of the good news. That was basically it. We just talked about how the meeting in Boston that Mark kind of vanilla-coated over here and told the committee that, in generic terms, what happened up in Boston was, what did happen is they did pick a design from Council Board that I think everybody was comfortable with, that serves on the municipal and school building committee. And fortunately, the Mass School Building Authority completely agreed with us. So that's going to be moving forward, and it's very exciting because now we're going to actually see what the designs would look like for the new high school, conceptual designs that would have to be changed. But, and we offered to the, they offered to the committee and offered to members of the subcommittee, they did have an initial brochure that was given to the municipal and the school building authority commission. We have those, if anybody on the committee would like them. I have one, Jason has one, Mark has one, just so you can see what the initial concept looks like before they actually get into the total design phase. But it's pretty exciting to see what changes would be forthcoming to high school if it moves forward. And the last part was, we just took a general tour of the school, as Jason has been very accommodating lately out on traveling show to show us all the different logistics of the building. And this time, I went to Studley, it's a, it's a well-built school. It does have a, probably some needs more, just in like the painting and stuff like that. It's not structural problems, but they did have problems before. That roof has been replaced, and we just need to do a little bit of, a bit more cleanup work and then a little bit of painting to make it a little more pleasing to the eye. But besides that, it's actually a pretty beautiful elementary school. And, Mr. Chairman, it is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Next, we have open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address the school committee at open forum? No? All right. Next, and move pursuant to MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, the school committee will convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the school committee. The school committee will not reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Mr. Gaddis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Take a three-minute recess.